I'd like to call a regular monthly meeting to audit. If I please rise for the prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening grateful for the success we have had so far this school year. We continue to be blessed with involved parents, dedicated employees, and hard-working students who are committed to the forward movement of our school district. We ask that you continue to bless our decision-makers with the wisdom to do good deeds for all children and to approach challenges with open minds and hearts. These things we pray in your name.
Ms. White, would you lead us in the pledge?
The Pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Focie, would you do roll call, please?
Ms. Sassevado is not with us. Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Egan.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Ms. Lemoine.
Here.
Ms. Stisar.
Here.
Mr. England.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. White.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Focie. Okay, we move on to item number four, this 2018-2019 Financial Compliance Audit. We have Mr. Dave Fernandez and Mr. Mickey Simon from Report. Are they here? They were here. Yes, okay. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you.
Mr. Simon, glad to have you here, sir.
Thank you. Okay, we're here, and your package will have 2018-2019 Conference of Annual Financial Reports, which has been audited by the firm of Report. And as Ms. England said, we have Mickey Simon here tonight to give you the results of that audit. So I'm going to turn it over to him.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you all, good evening.
Good evening.
All right. So yes, and first I want to just express appreciation for the opportunity to work with Saint Bernard Parish School Board. It really is a pleasure. It's actually my 12th or 13th, I've lost count. But you guys are actually one of the first audits I ever worked on since coming to Report. So you have a special place in my heart. So yeah, so just to kind of give you a broad overview of what I'm going to cover, you know, the thing you're probably most interested in, is it a clean opinion? Yes. Were there any findings? No.
Good. Thank you.
So I can go now, right? So no, but let's just go through a little bit in detail. So the, I guess, the main opinion on the financial statements is really on page one. And again, not to go, not to go through in-depth, but just sort of showing you where those items are. You know, it talks about management's responsibility for the financial statements, and our responsibility is to perform an audit to obtain reasonable assurance that they are materially properly stated. So our opinion is actually on page two, that particular paragraph. We're saying the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the school board. And so that's where we're saying that's what's called an unmodified opinion in our language, what you would normally call just a clean opinion in that respect. So, but I do need to, I guess, draw your attention to one paragraph in this that's just the correction of an error, just the, in the note five to the financial statements, there was a transaction with FEMA that was really just some, really had some paperwork on their end, some processing problems that caused a misstatement in previous years. So this is really just drawing that out. So we are required to just highlight that in our opinion. So just bring it to your attention, but it's further, you know, described in note five. Okay. So if we go to the financials, and there's other reports that I'll get to at the end, but if we just go to the financial statements, really the, there weren't many changes in the government-wide financial statements, which are the ones that, if you recall, last year I mentioned, you know, are more like if you were a business with long-term assets and liabilities on it. But since there weren't many changes, I thought we would just focus on the general fund, which is the main operating fund of the organization. And just kind of take you through the balance sheet, which is on page 26. So your total assets of around 31.2 million is an increase of about 700,000, so not a great change, but an increase is always good there. Total liabilities of about 10 million, which is a decrease of around 300,000 from the previous year. And then total fund balance of 21.2 million is an increase of about 900,000 over the previous year. And then if you look at the fund balance, especially the unassigned, you know, you'll see categories, non-spendable, restricted, assigned, but the unassigned piece is something that you could just say really has no earmarks or intentions behind it, it's just, you know, for the school board to use as directed. And one of the things that we like to draw out is how many days of general fund expenditures is in that unassigned fund balance? And there's a benchmark of about 60 days that the GFOA recommends is a, is a good, healthy fund balance. You guys are at 66, so you're above that. It's very, very healthy fund balance that's unassigned. So I just wanted to draw that out as well. If we go to the next general fund financial statement, which is a statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, it's on page 30. So this draws out the revenues and expenditures of the organization, and you can see total revenues of 74.3 million, which is an increase of about 1.2 from the previous year, and total expenditures of 71.4 million, which is an increase of 3.2 million from the previous year. And then with other financing sources and uses down near the bottom, you can see of right around 2 million, it's actually uses, which is mostly transfers out to other funds. You have a total change in fund balance of about a million dollars. So again, it's very high level. I don't know if there are any questions on the financial statements, but just wanting to draw out those changes from the previous year. The other reports that we do issue really have more to do with the fact that you're a governmental entity and you receive federal dollars. So the next report that I'll draw your attention to is on page 196. So you get to skip a lot of the meat in the middle, but that's okay. 196. And this is always a good reminder of the types of things that we do look at. This is the report of what we look at in terms of government auditing standards, which is a little bit more rigorous standards than just a, just plain vanilla audit, if that makes sense. And so what we're looking at is internal controls over financial reporting and on compliance. So we tested those things, and we had no findings. So when I say no findings, that's, you know, covering this report as well. So when we're looking at the internal controls over financial reporting and the compliance, we found no issues in all of our testing in those matters. The next report is on page 198. I don't have to go too far there. It's got a long title, but this is essentially our report over the federal, our audit of the federal funds that flow through the school board. And so again, we're looking at internal controls, but this time, they're internal controls over compliance. And then on the compliance itself, again, no issues there as a result of our testing. So those are, you know, unmodified or clean opinions, we found no non-compliance. It also draws out that we tested some major, we select federal programs as major, and it's sort of on a rotating basis as far as which ones we'll test. And this time, we chose the child nutrition program and temporary assistance for needy families. So if you were to go over to, let's see, page 202. This is the entire list of federal monies that you guys get, and it's about 12.35 million. We tested, like I said, child nutrition and temporary assistance for needy families. Again, with no issues, it's all, all good news here. So then if you go over to page 205, one last thing, this is really a summary of everything I've just said. And so if you ever wanted to know what's kind of, you know, give me the one-page synopsis, this would be it. This is everything. Unmodified opinion means clean, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, no non-compliance were identified either in the financials or in the federal money. So there's your, there's your summary there. Okay. So there is another report that the BESI requires in here, and it's, you're flipping a few more pages, page 208. This used to be a lot more data that they wanted us to look at, a lot more schedules, they pared it down considerably. This is the second year it's been pared down. So they have us go through, you can see them numbered, 1, 2, 3, 4, the different procedures that they have us do, and you can see the results of all of those where no differences were noted, because the data that, you know, the school board is reporting to the state, in essence, if I had to sum it up in one sentence, that data is, is as it should be. Okay. Then I have, not in the booklet that you have, just some what we call required communication to those charged with governance. Okay, we do issue a letter that I've given some copies to Mr. Fernandez, and he'll give it to, you know, the board president. But it's just a letter that we issue, and some things that we're required to communicate to you at the end of the audit. I'll start with the qualitative aspects of accounting practices. There were no new accounting policies adopted this year, so that's just one thing required to, to report. The most sensitive estimates were the post-employment benefit and the pension liability estimates. Those are all calculated by actuaries, they are in essence estimates. And then there were some estimates around the workers' comp claims, that liability as it stands. And then the next sort of areas of the, of the audit that we're required to report on, we encountered no significant difficulties in dealing with management, we're required to tell you if we did there. Management has corrected any misstatements, and the only one that really came to light, really David brought it to me, so it was his correction, not ours, was that correction of an error. And then the disagreements with management, we're pleased to report, we had no disagreements with management. It's always a good thing, we like that, too. And then management consulting with other independent accountants, that would be, for example, if they didn't like something we said, and they went to other accountants. And to our knowledge, that did not happen, so pleased to report that as well. So do you like getting all good news?
Oh, I do.
It's great, isn't it? Love it.
With the Z, you know.
Right. Okay, so there's one other report that the LLA requires, again, you don't have this in front of you either, but would they just sort of tack on some additional procedures that they want us to do with regard to this? And it's a set of about 13 procedures, and over the years, it's been pared down to about three or four, just because everything is, for one, been so clean, or we might test it in other areas. If anything significant came from those procedures, they would rise to the level of maybe being in the audit as an audit finding. Nothing that came through that rose to that level, just a couple of things like, you know, bank reconciliations, having some older items on it. Again, these are very minor things that, you know, almost no governmental entity would, would sort of be without at, at some point, and, but anyway, and then some deposits, just looking at, they weren't necessarily made within one day, or we couldn't determine how many days. So just required to tell you that, those are very, very tiny things. Again, they don't rise to the level of an audit finding, but we're just kind of required to report on those, so. But overall, as I stated at the very beginning, it's all good news, so that's all I have. Again, I do want to thank you for the opportunity to work with the school board. We've really been grateful for, for that relationship. Are there any questions?
Want to answer any questions? Well, what I like to say is, you know, we just want to thank you for your contribution, you know, putting all this together, working with Mr. Fernandez.
Yeah.
And his, his little group of people, you know, it's amazing what they can do.
Yeah.
And with the administration and our school system, it's a plus.
Yeah.
Especially on today's, you know.
This is not tiny.
I know.
There's a lot in here, and it takes a lot of detailed effort to get it, to get it to that point, so I agree with you.
Right.
Good job.
Ms. Focie, you have anything?
Well, I'll wait until y'all can.
Mr. Stisar?
I had one question.
Sure.
How long did it take for the audit? I know you were here for quite a while.
Right, it's usually three to four weeks, and a team of three, not including myself, so, yeah.
Okay.
So it's, it's quite a few hours, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And just kudos and congratulations to Mr. Fernandez, Ms. Focie, entire administration, and his, his staff and office. And it, you know, the report is clean, which is a great finding, that's the only finding, which is great. And we like to hear all that good news, and it just shows that the school board and the administration has, have been good stewards of the public's money, and we appreciate the report and for the cooperation that you and your firm always give to us every year. And I know David, you know, they, they asked for so many documents, and it takes so much time out of, out of your job description, too. So great job, again, to you and the staff and to the administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Focie?
You know, and, and I think as Mickey mentioned as he was leaving the podium, it's no small effort to put this over 200-plus-page document together that David Fernandez does with just a very small staff in order to do so. And I think it was significant in that, again, we've had no findings, no questioned costs, not even adjusting entries, and more importantly, no management letter outlining any problems or weaknesses in internal controls, which is significant. So I think we're, we're getting used to this, or we've gotten used to it 25 or more years that this, it's been like this, and especially with the millions and millions of dollars that have passed through the school system, especially over the last 14 years, has been so significant, and we've been able to do so with a heavy burden on our small business department. I mean, we didn't go and get any outside help to do this as all this has been passing through. So I think it's a testament to David, to the group, and not only that, to the people out in our schools, our school-based administrators and such. It's when we require certain documentation, and we put those requirements out there, and it's hard for sometimes for teachers or administrators to understand that we've got to have complete source documents out there for auditing purposes. And I've heard horror stories in other districts where that has held up purchasing and getting materials in the classrooms to kids, but our people here have made it to the point where that doesn't happen here. So that flow of materials to our students does not suffer for the controls that we've put in place to make sure that we are adequately documenting every one of our expenditures and making sure that we're complying with not only the school regulations or the state regulations, but also the federal regs, which is extremely, extremely important. So I just want to again say congratulations to David, his small group of people, and really everyone within the school system who have helped make this possible, and, and, you know, to you, sitting around this, this horse, you who established those policies that we put into place. So this has been that cooperative effort of everyone within the school system. So I think we're all most appreciative of what has transpired. And you don't see many times with, always with governmental bodies, that you continually get some such clean audits and unmodified opinions without any of the adjustments that you're seeing in other places. So congratulations, and thanks to our auditors who can sometimes seem somewhat unreasonable, but, you know. But we are very professional, and we always comply, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Focie. David, fantastic job.
Thank you, and it is a lot of hard work on the part of my department. But I just wanted to mention something. I came to you a couple of months ago, and I told you that one of the ladies had helped us a lot with this book.
Yeah.
Ms. Pet Sassevado had finally retired from that, she had retired previously from the school system, but she came back every year to help us out, and she finally had to retire from that as well. So stepping up this year to help us out with the design and everything was missing to England, and she did a lot of work putting this together and helping us out with it. So I think, I thought she deserved to be recognized as well. She put a maximum effort into getting this together for y'all tonight, so just wanted to recognize.
I know that you really appreciated that. But keep them busy.
Don't worry, there's a lot more.
She's very busy.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Anyone else? Thank you, Mickey. Okay. That was nice, David. Okay, move on to, I don't know, five, motion to incorporate the report of the General Committee meeting into the minutes of November, regular monthly meeting minutes. Have a motion by Mr. Warren, second by Ms. Lemoine. Any questions? If not, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Now, on this next item, this is item number six, is a motion to approve the following minutes. Ms. Benesak never had time to get these out, either if anybody wants to take a look at them, you can take a look at them for a few minutes, and then we can vote on this. Do you have a couple copies of that?
I just have one sec.
One sec. If anybody wants to take a look at it, or vote on it, or we can, one, defer it, defer it and come back to it later, so everybody just take a look at it, and then we can go on from there. Okay. So we'll move on to item number, item number seven, personnel changes for the month of November. Ms. Focie?
As you can see, we've had a couple of changes, which are highlighted in yellow, but what we are doing, and I think it's important with these particular changes, one is a replacement of a teacher that you see who has resigned. The other additional people, we're happy to say, these have been student teachers who we are now hiring full-time for the spring semester, and primarily to take the place we have a great many maternity leaves coming up, and leaves for other medical reasons and such. And so we're bringing in and hiring then fully-certified teachers who have come out now, done our, done the student teaching with us, and we're putting them into the classrooms to replace those teachers who are going out on leave in the spring. So they'll be rotating around in those particular positions. So that's why you see these additions on here, and we think that's going to be better for our students to do that than trying to get substitutes that may not be as highly qualified.
Any questions for Ms. Focie?
I have a question.
Yeah, Ms. Stisar?
Yes, I see a resignation that, I'm wondering how we're going to replace the individual. Individual.
You talking about this one?
No.
We will be advertising for that particular position.
Okay, we're going to advertise for it, and then using the processes, we look from within and then outside?
We will look from within first to see if those have qualifications, because the skill level for that particular position is, is high, and if, if we cannot find that, then we will look outside as well.
Okay, thank you, just wanted to make sure that process was remaining the same.
Mm-hmm.
And I know we, we, we mentioned the retirees, but they, they gave a lot of time and energies to our students, so again, happy retirement to Rosalynn Hanson.
Right.
Juliette Anderson and Nolan Terrabone. And thank you for your many years of service.
Touche. Okay, anyone else? Okay, move on to item number eight, motion approved to revise 2019-2020 general fund and special revenue fund budget. This was a recommendation by the committee.
Who moved?
Have a motion by Mr. Smith.
One second.
Second by Ms. Donsel. We got Mr. Fernandez, see if you have any questions. If not, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
All right. Okay. Motion, item number nine, motion to approve the policy updates. First one is a JGCB innovations. Have a motion from Ms. Lemoine, second by Ms. Jackson. Audit was discussed at the committee meeting. This was a recommendation.
And I'll be able to answer any questions about policies further than you would have from the committee meeting.
Okay. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
The next one is ADDFB, service animals in schools. Have a motion by Ms. White, second by Mr. Smith. And this was, was recommended by the committee also. Ms. Stisar?
Mr. England, it was stated at the committee meeting, and I'm sure it's the same, that all of these were actually out of state law, correct?
Correct.
All these changes in our policy.
That's right.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. No other questions, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
The next one is JS, that student fees, fines, and charges. Have a motion by Mr. Smith.
One second.
Second by Mr. Warren. And it's also was recommended, recommended by the committee. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
It's EBVB, school and student safety.
Also moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Stisar.
One second.
Second by Ms. Lemoine. Any questions, this was recommended by the committee. If not, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
JCzag, threats of terrorism or violence. Have a motion by Ms. Lemoine, second by Ms. Stisar. And this was recommended by the committee. We wanted to great detail on these things at the, at the committee meeting. Okay, if being none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Okay. Did everybody have a chance to look at those minutes, so we can go back to item number six?
I'm working on it right now.
Okay, all right. Well, let's just go to item number 10, and then, then we'll come back to it. Item number 10, items to be placed on the agenda of next committee meeting. Do you have anything? You got it up to five days before the meeting, you know, to get through myself, Ms. Stisar, and Ms. Focie, and Ms. Benesak, and we'd be glad to put it on the agenda. Just take a couple of minutes until the, until those minutes.
Ms. England?
Yes.
While we're waiting, I've got a question.
Sure.
Just to back up a little bit on that, on this policy updates.
If not, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Next one is EBBC, emergency crisis management. This was, was recommended by the committee. Have a motion by Mr. Warren, second by Ms. White. And was recommended by the committee. Any questions? Being none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
JCzag, threats of terrorism or violence. Have a motion by Ms. Lamore, second by Ms. Tysor. And this was recommended by the committee. We wanted to great detail on these things at the, at the committee meeting. Okay. If being none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Okay. Did everybody have a chance to look at those minutes, so we can go back to item number six?
I'm working on them right now.
Okay. All right. Well, let's just go to item number 10, and then, then we'll come back to it. Item number 10, items to be placed on the agenda of next committee meeting. Do you have anything? You got up to five days before the meeting, you know, to even get to myself, Ms. Tysor, Ms. Focie, or Ms. Benesak, and we'd be glad to put it on the agenda. You just take a couple of minutes until the, go to those meetings.
Ms. England?
Yes.
While we're waiting, I've got a question for Ms. Focie. Just to back up a little bit on that, on this policy updates, this was because of recently-passed state laws, these updates? Because I know we, we recently redid our policy.
Right.
In general, and these came out after we redid our, our policy?
The policy manual that we updated, we did many of the updates from prior legislative sessions. What happens as a result of the 2019 legislative session, these policies have to be written, be vetted by the legal team, and it takes several months in order to do that. And so usually the revisions come in the fall, and that's pretty much the cycle. So anything that's coming out of the legislative session that requires a policy change, usually we would do at this time of year.
Okay. Okay, sounds good.
You okay, Ms. White? Okay, fine. Okay, now we'll go back to item number six, since everybody had a few minutes to look at those meetings for those minutes. Motion to approve the following minutes, regular monthly meeting of October 22, 2019 as published on November 15, 2019. The motion by Mr. Warren, second by Mr. Smith. No questions, or additions? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 9-0.
Okay. Then we had a special meeting on October 31, 2019 as published on November 15, 2019.
So moved.
The motion by Mr. Warren.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any corrections or additions? No questions? If not, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 9-0.
Okay. Now we go back to the regular items. Item number 11, superintendent's recommendations. Ms. Focie?
Okay. Just very quickly, as we know, we're going to have a special meeting prior to the committee meeting on December 10 for my evaluation. That's always fun. And then just to parents, to please, we, we, students will be off next week for the Thanksgiving holidays, so we wish everyone a very wonderful holiday season with that, and please be safe if you're traveling on the road. Immediately after that, when we come back, there'll be a lot of festivities for the Christmas season, the new holiday season. And before we meet again, I just want to reiterate that on December 5 and 6, we will have the Christmas play.
That's nice.
At Shumet High School's Cultural Arts Center. That's always a wonderful event. On December 4, though, the elementary schools will be doing their Christmas caroling again. So that was a really wonderful event last year, as all of our elementary schools had a school bus and went around their.
Neighborhoods.
Neighborhoods doing caroling, and it was a super great, we got a lot of positive feedback, and everybody had a great deal of fun doing that. And that's going to be Wednesday night on December 4. The Christmas show, as I said, on the 5th and 6th. And on 7th, there's going to be the performance of Handel's Messiah, which is a significant performance. Our kids do an incredible job. The New Orleans Symphony Choir, of course, will be there. Our kids will be involved in it, and if you've never listened to that, that is a tremendous, a tremendous event. That day, the Islaños Christmas, I mean, there's so much going on throughout the holiday season, so I would suggest everybody check your school websites. You're going to see all of these things listed, and then our district-wide calendar has these as well. So there's lots and lots happening. I just wanted to call attention to those few. And, and one other one that I really want to, I guess, emphasize, is on December 12, the Shumet High Voices will be doing the Christmas caroling in the French Quarter, where they go in costume and go to several of the restaurants and the different areas in the French Quarter, and people have just, they, they wait for us to come now because we, they do such a fantastic job. So if you're interested in any of those, we can get more details and can follow the kids if you so choose, or at least be in one of the establishments that they go in and entertain just the people who are dining or shopping at that time. So lots and lots of good things coming up.
It sure is, and, you know, it's a busy time of the year, but it's good things.
Absolutely.
It really is. So if you have any time, please try to make one of these events, please. Any questions for Ms. Focie before we do the next item? Yes, Ms. Tysor?
Thank you, Mr. England. Thank you, Ms. Focie. Just a quick comment, the event on December 12 that is coming up, the Voices, I had the opportunity to follow them a couple of years ago, and it was just phenomenal to see our young students going around and singing beautifully, and it just made, it made Saponoy Parish shine. All these people, you know, who were saying, "What school are they from? What's, you know, where, where?" You know, and, and to let them know that they came from Shumet High School in Saponoy Parish was just a wonderful thing. They, they make, make you proud. You know, they just put on terrific, you know, show, and they just, just a great indication that Saponoy Parish is back and strong, and we have a wonderful school system with not only bright students, but very talented students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tysor. And another thing, too, on this past weekend, I was watching a football game, and they had a, they had one of our former football players announced on television, Norris Weas.
I did, I heard that.
And they didn't mention his name, that this young quarterback from, which, which the ball was good, I got to give it to him. It was really good, from Ole Miss, you know, he broke his record. But Norris Weas, his name was announced, and I felt a little proud for playing from Saponoy, you know, from Shumet High. So I just wanted to mention that. And Shumet went to the state final, you know, to the state.
Playoffs.
But they missed about a few points, you know, but they did great. We're giving them a round of applause on that. So we'll move on to.
And the girls volleyball team also made the state playoffs as well.
Good. So, okay. Anything else? If not, need a motion to adjourn. Mr. Campbell, second, from Ms. Jackson. All in favor?
Aye.
This means adjourn. Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving.